Commissioners, for your convenience, when I was at the airport, I did take pictures of the trees in the brush. And I have to email those to you, so you should have those photographed. But it's pretty significant growth. It's probably been that way for, I would estimate, twenty years. Continuing, as I have noted previously, and which you are already aware, there are numerous pregod holes located in the runway taxiway environment. Many of those holes are located in lighting systems. Roads like to chew on cable and transformers insulation. And such increase holes which water can enter. Many lighting systems fail but do not operate as originally designed due to the leaking of power from the cables. Regular time to make up for the loss by providing additional power, which is necessary increases the airport's power consumption. In 2019, the 7.5 kilo watt regulator was operating at 6.7 kilowatts. Eventually, this system will fail. New components will have to be installed. It is suggested that measures be taken by the airport to reduce or eliminate pregod population and thereby increase the life of the system and potentially reduce future power consumption. There are burrows under nearly every runway hole and taxiway turnoff signs. Considering most were not operational, it might be such that the birds have damaged the transformers. Assistance may be available from the federal aviation line. I'd love to copy with the FFAA-based aircraft inventory and apply, also need to obtain a copy and update the information about the FFA, only assigned six aircraft to the airport. Just to go along with this, myself and my staff actually had a meeting with Mike Proline yesterday at APM. And in that meeting, we did a Zoom with the FAA and Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division. They are incredible partners. The FAA has scheduled what may be termed an unannounced inspection for tomorrow at our airport. And I think probably was based on the report that I just read. So once again, the FAA is going to be doing inspection tomorrow. I was very open with the FAA and advised them the information that is read to you. They are very favorable to working with us and helping us and assisting us as well as the state to address some of these issues. The capital improvement plan, at this time, I think Mike and a former airport manager worked on it in February. I don't think it was ever submitted to the board. They are, based on this information, Mike is reworking that because the lighting system, which is put in cable, I think seventeen years ago, is failing. And what needs to occur is it's going to have to be a total rework of the entire system. In other words, we're going to have to go in there and do it up and put cable, put the cable in conduit, which is the safe way when you have pregod at the station. And probably while we're at it, we'll use digital lighting improvements and things like that. But it's going to be significant. So anyway, that is a report. And the letter is dated April the 24th, 2022. So that's a report on our airport. And I get the information and the inspection that's going to take place tomorrow. I advise this board. Moving on, Tony did a really good job providing some financial information which shows that we've been, the county basically acquired the airport and the land in 1983. And you see that we've had that for almost forty years. In that time, you'll see that, once again, our partners, the DECA Ed and the State of New Mexico Department of Aviation and Transportation, have really been significantly helping us with that airport. So far up to date, the FAA has spent $10,865,650. The State of New Mexico has spent $3,621,482.63. And the county, which is really a ten percent back, has been spending, spent in that timeframe, So we see that by far, the FAA and the State of New Mexico have really been carrying the burden of this airport for numerous years. In the report that Tony prepared on motors and capital expenditures, we've had to work on a thermal building, catalytic installation, airport signs, window installation, cracks, painting, routine maintenance to the turn of $654,808.62. Many residents are under the impression that the airport is a money-making business. So Tony was kind enough, we actually have started in 2012, you see basically a breakdown of revenues, expenditures, and variances. And so for year, basically 2012 through 2022, we see that total revenues brought in by the airport have been $633,050.68. Total expenditures for the airport have been $1,151,187.5. Our total variance or total, this would be called a loss, So in the, just one thing to add, one thing that came out by the Environmental Protection Agency is in the fuel area, they call it a fuel farm at the airport, it has to be contained and insulated. Our airport does not have containment area. My Proline estimated the cost of that to be about $100,000. Since it's an Environmental Protection Agency issue, we could be red flagged, the airport, our airport could be red flagged at any time, basically shut down. We're not the only ones in that position. There are several other airports within the State of New Mexico that are facing similar situations. With that, Mike, FAA, and the State of New Mexico, Colfax County, we'll be meeting regularly. We have kind of set Thursdays aside to meet because this is going to take some major planning and basically funding to get the airport up to standard and get a resolution. And the one thing that I think we can see is that we have been spending incredible amount of money. The state has too, as well as the FFA. And once again, the FFA and the State of New Mexico are incredible, incredible partners to be funding, putting up as much money as they can. But as far as operating this like a business, we've tried, we've had several different managers in there. I think a lot of citizens, like I said, are under the impression that we're actually a money-making operation at the airport. And we're not, we're offsetting costs. And it's good to bring in revenue, it's good to offset costs, but it's still costing the county. So in the meeting that I had yesterday with everybody, one of the things that I had suggested was maybe looking into partnership, RFP. And Commissioner Fernandez, if you remember, it has been maybe six weeks or so ago, you had actually asked me to kind of look into that and see if that was a possibility. I think it is a distinct possibility. If we could get a financial partner that had the financial ability to really work with these entities and work with our partners, Colfax County would still be in the loop, we would still own the airport. But if we could lease that, I think there would be an opportunity to actually consistently fix a lot of these issues, keep it up to state, and perhaps actually turn it into a venture. So with that said, I have prepared an RFP. I was informed yesterday by Mike Proline that this isn't going to be a normal part of it because we are dealing with federal partners and state partners. It is going to be a very complex process. And we're willing to have to receive federal approval and public state approval, and just about every multiple steps as we proceed through that process. I still think it's the right thing to do. You can see we've got the airport before years. You see the evidence before you. We, we look at other options. I think some of the options that I composed to this commission could actually, if we benefit the right way, could actually be an economic boon for the illnessness of the illness of the entire community. And with that, just to go on the next process. At this point, are there any questions?
No, the only question that I had to check is is any government is putting on a good, good kind of management to give the direction, making things, as expected, the possibility of them maybe to appreciate the airport. I mean, it's a good issue, we explained that as a thing.
It was done by RFPs, it's done so well. So Mr. Chairman, is this the only question you want to answer? Or is that going to be the next?
Yeah, I have ten in the next one. I want just to report from the county manager. Are there any other questions or comments from the county manager? None, okay. Let's move on to item number ten. Discuss take action on RFP number 2022-04, which is going to be fixed base, operated for Colfax County Airport at Angel Fire, New Mexico. And that's what you have before you, which is the RFP, which is part of number ten. So they might be able to do.
So Mr. Chairman, I've got a lot of questions. The RFP, yeah, just to see this, the industry, we can tell everyone and anything that comes to it. What I did notice, or what I really noticed, is there's some conflict in the number of points. I think you're reading the RFP, it says 105 points with the local maximum 115. What page are you referring to, have to listen to?
So on page, page 24 of 35, at the top, it talks about 105 points are possible with the resident veterans preference applied, a maximum of 110 points are possible. So that says up there, and then on another page.
I'm sorry, what page was it?
I'm sorry?
What page was it, I'm sorry?
Twenty-four, I believe.
Oh, twenty, okay.
Twenty-four or twenty-five.
And then on page 22, it says a maximum of 115 points are possible, 125 points with application of Colfax County, State of New Mexico resident business preference. So maybe there's something I don't understand why they're talking about different maximum numbers of points?
So on page 22, where it says a maximum of 115 possible, are possible, and then 125 with the application of the resident business preference. So if they have that, the resident preference, if it applies to them, and they can actually have a total of 125 points.
Right, but so a maximum of 115, it says on page 22, but then on 24, it says a maximum of 110.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay. We can, I can change that, on the 24.
Because then it says if oral presentations are held, a maximum of 125 points are possible.
Okay.
So basically, page 22 and 24 kind of conflict.
Okay, we can change that.
The other concern, and Mr. Manager, I've expressed this to you previously, because what I'd like to see through this RFP and potentially having a future FBO is that we retain an organization that will be able to invest in the airport. For example, I don't know the exact number, somewhere around $350,000 in grants we acquired at the airport this year for hangars. And I believe no work has been done at this point with those hangars because the bids came back at almost double that, right? Around $700,000 or something. And so we didn't have enough money. And so now we've got to start scrambling for more grants, which is just putting off. I mean, the way this airport is, or one of the primary steps for this airport to expand and potentially become profitable is through the development of hangars because people bring in these million-dollar airplanes and they don't want to leave them out on the runway, which is what they're having to do right now. Or cram three into one slot, one of our primary hangar, you know, sometimes a lot of three, I've seen three airplanes in that one hangar. So I think expansion of the airport is key to turning this. And I think any good businessman that looks at the financials for this airport and understands airports is going to also understand that. The airport as it runs today operates at a deficit. And you're going to have to expand services in order to become profitable. And if somebody bids on an FBO, they're going to want to become profitable. So we need to make sure somebody's ready to invest in the airport. And, you know, who knows, they may have to pitch in money for the hangars that they can then lease as an FBO and then generate additional revenue. Well, my only concern about that is if I was an investor, I wouldn't bid on this contract because the contract's only for a maximum of eight years. And, you know, I've done some asset investment in my time. And if I don't have an ROI of 13 years, I don't look at the property. Like, if I go to buy a house to turn into a rental house. If I don't have a return on investment in 13 years, and that's really kind of a minimum that most investors have that are actually looking to buy assets and to make money on them. So I'm concerned that if we're going to entice somebody that is going to come in and put an investment into this property, that the term of the agreement's going to need to be longer. And I'm not sure legally what we can do. I know there are some constraints by the procurement code. I think it's 20 years, if I remember correctly, for real property. I don't know if this counts as real property, though.
That I don't know, I'll have to ask because I understand the whole, you know, maximum of eight years, where you're going to put all this money into this for eight years. And then, yeah, I can actually, I think it can be a huge amount.
And Mr., I agree with you. And actually, that was supposed to be 20 years of the proposal, so that's a, I'll think.
So that's just the title?
That was, I don't think it, I think it got filled, we didn't get a change. But I agree with you in everything you said. I think that if we're going to get a business partner to work with us, I think we need, it needs to be enticing. And I would, I think 20 years would be the minimum that I would set for this. And once again, Colfax County is going to continue to retain possession of the airport. It's going to be out of property. But if we can have some very, you know, efficient and effective business partners that can go in and put in, and I'm not exaggerating, million-dollar hangars and really invest in this airport, we should be investing. Once again, that's all capital improvement. They're basically putting money into our airport, on the citizens' airport.
It's like a leasehold improvement.
You're exactly correct. So anyway, that should be 20 years. The other good thing, I do believe that with these reports coming out and the timing in the RFP, I think it's good because, once again, we want to be good partners as well. And so with these reports that we're getting and the report that I should get tomorrow, shortly thereafter, basically, we're disclosing everything and at the most minute detail about the condition of this airport. And once again, I think that's fair. I think it's the right thing to do, especially when we're looking at partnerships. I think the timing is right.
Mr. Chairman, not only last comment actually is to Fire Marshal Dennis. For the expansion of this airport, let's say that we wanted to bring in true commercial airlines. One of the requirements, I don't know if it's a requirement, but one of the major factors in being able to do that is having fire facilities at the airport itself. And I know we have the money to build a new structure there. Right now, we're borrowing the structure from the airport itself. And the structure's not really designed to have house fire fighting equipment. But that is going to be a key component. If we want a partner to come in and to grow this airport, they're going to have to be able to start soliciting commercial flights like we have in Taos now, with Taos Air. And no commercial, no significant commercial airlines is going to buy if we don't have firefighting equipment on the facility. So what is the ETA on the new building and the equipment that's going to be at the airport?
I believe we've got everything approved for Mike Proline, our architect, to start doing the dirt work and preparing a bid for the airport to go off the bid. We have the money available, actually even soliciting some craft rescue trucks, we'll try to find us a craft rescue truck for that facility as well, which I think would truly benefit that airport. But right now, it's all going to happen for architect. So as soon as he can get us some information and get the ball rolling on that, we've got the money ready to go.
And Commissioner Weir. And Commissioner, the other thing we can do is I'll invite Nick. I think probably be good for him. Once we start getting these meetings established on Thursdays. And once again, we can start moving forward and I can start giving the commission basically advisory, basically advise them on kind of progression. One of the other things on the information that I had Tony provided is if you look all the way back in 1983, and this is just kind of interesting, but you see FFA grants, you see state matches, then you see county matches. And going all the way back from 1983, and that's on the far right side of the document, you see that all those have been completed, which is good. We see some of the, where it says airfield pavement rehabilitation, we started getting that, but we see basically no activity. We see all these are indicated incomplete. The fuel dispenser sheltered incomplete. The fuel truck, just so you know, did have. When this report was generated, there was no activity on that. Tony did work with Scott at this time to go ahead and prepare the deal for that. Contract hangars, no activity, running the tape, no activity. So, once again, just wanted to make you clear about that as well. And then, just to kind of, as of yesterday, our new airport manager, Scott, has been working. And he reports that reflectors have been replaced. The segregated circle that needed repainting has been repainted. He has been knocking down as much rush and addressing growth in the airfield. He has filled in pregod holes. He has worked on siding. One of the issues that we found, Robert and I went up to the airport, is that the existing fuel truck was left inoperative, did not work. So I want to think, the superintendent and his staff they were able to get that fuel truck operating. Scott has continued to rebuild from the fuel farm area. Once again, he and Tony did prepare an appeal for the brand-new fuel truck, so that's positive. And when we did an auto, we were missing a large writing lawnmower. And we did, Scott was able to find that. It was actually one of the fire stations nearby. Apparently, they get quality and turned it. And I do appreciate our road superintendent. We did have some galas in the runway from the helicopters working on the fire suppression issues and stuff like that. And with the county road superintendent's direction, we were actually able to name those repairs to the runway. So that's what we have done in the talk.
Thank you, Money. Thank you for your concerns, Commissioner Weir. I think that I've always said is that my wish is to get somebody else to run that port, not the county. So I hope we keep that in mind when we do this stuff, okay? And then, and hope that, that's something that's brought up during the, also the things that this means when you consider everything else. With that being said, I would make a motion that we approve RFP 2022. 2022-04 with those exceptions and those changes that Brett mentioned, which is, you know, fixing the point system and expanding that to 2022.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the RFP 2022-04, which is made by Commissioner, it was accepted by Commissioner Weir. Before we go, I just want to make a quick comment also that thank you county manager for getting this RFP put together, meeting with our attorney of legal. I think it's certified the financial statements that we've seen today and seen in the past that Colfax County should not be in the business of running an airport. So glad to see this being done. So let's do a vote call.
Can I just remember?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number 12, discuss take action on RFP 2022.
It's great. Order number 11.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping it. Sorry. Number 11, discuss take action award RFP request for bid on number 2022-GAS-02 aviation fuel for Colfax County Airport at Angel Fire, New Mexico.
Good morning, Fishers. Since there were some questions on the last meeting, we do have Vicki from City Service Nowcom. She'll be available with her zoom.
I'm sure you remember what the service was. Some of the issues were that there was a comparison, should we see a comparison, if I'm correct, the amount of fuel, the cost of fuel for the previous year? I think that was one of the issues.
That's what it was, yeah, the price, yeah.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, my only, my concern was, based Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, my only, my concern was basically that I didn't understand the proposal in that the dollar amounts that were set at the top of the proposal and then below, there was language that says the per gallon rate would be set by those two different locations depending upon type of fuel. So I didn't understand how the dollar amounts at the top of the proposal related to the per gallon rate that was being proposed. So I guess it's, you know, I have, this is the first one of aviation fuel that I've done. I just didn't have the knowledge to make a difference.
It's the first one we've done, yeah.
I think the original contract went back all the way to before any of us were even on the board.
That's right.
It was like, what, 11 or 12?
It was 211. Commissioner Jim, all of them, I don't know. That's been at least 90 years or more.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Weir, it looks like we have, is this Vicki Maxwell? Do you have any questions you want to ask her? Vicki, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can't hear.
All right. Good morning, how are you?
Good, well, thank you.
So Vicki, this is Commissioner Weir. Again, as we just stated, this is the first bid for fuel that I've personally done. And I was hoping that you could just educate me on this bid so that I can understand what it is we are approving. But at the top of the bid, it says the following are key offering by C S V and Phillips 66 Aviation. And then it says bid amount is based on year for terms and previous volumes, 13,000 in ab gas and 30,000 in jet A. And then below, it says year one, ab gas, $650. I guess, I don't understand what you're trying to communicate there.
Sure, understood. So the way that fuel bill bids work is we're not, we're not calculating the price because fuel fluctuates so much. The price itself is going to fluctuate. It's just how much of a markup, we'll say, is added onto it. So the more years that you do, obviously, the lower that markup is going to do because we're investing in you from that standpoint. So if you look at year one, the ab gas 650, that is on top of the fuel cost. So fuel costs, taxes, fees, all that is going to remain constant. I say constant, constantly fluctuating for that, for the fuel price. This is that, City Service Downcom is adding 650 for that year to, you know, market brand, that's literally for your FBO. And the more years that are committed to City Service and Phillips for that matter, then the lower that price is because we are now, you know, contracted for a longer term. We're marketing you a lot more.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so just to be clear, so that's $650 for year one on top of what the price per gallon fee is?
Correct, total over the year, yes. So it would be 650 per year for that one year. If you were to do a two-year contract, it would be 520 for each year. So 520 for the first year, 520 for the second year, and so on and so on.
Okay, and if we include this for four years, it's 390, 390 each year?
Correct, yes, sir.
We do.
And we have some marketing already in place for you guys. I know with Fraser and I, we set up, actually, you guys are a key spotlight in December, I believe. So you're on the whole marketing for spotlight FBO in December. So we've already set that up. Hopefully get into your busy season, right in the middle of your busy season.
So Danielle, when we approve this bid or proposal, do we have to vote on the number of years or was the RFP, or RFP, which I can't remember which one we did? It is specified terms?
No, well, we haven't done, obviously, we haven't even done the contract yet. So you can vote on the number of years and in the contract, we can put all that together. And then that's going to be separate. That'll be approved separate.
Was mentioning to Danielle before, usually, because it did show one year, and that's the reason that I offered the four-year. Usually on aviation, it's anywhere from three to five years. And so that's why I put it out there to four years, so that way you can see the difference.
Do we have any, anybody else bid?
No, this is our only, our only bidder.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we award RFP 2022 to City Service Downcom for a period of four years.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept this bid, which is made by Commissioner Doos, sacked by Commissioner Weir. Are there any other questions or comments before we go? See it done? Still a roll call, both?
Commissioner, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, now we're on item number 12, discuss and take action on, request for proposal number 2022-05, which is medical services for the Airborne Model Contention Center. Morning, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager. I would like to give approval for this RFP to go out for, for the Airborne Model Contention Center. This one's a little different than the previous one we had before. We're not actually wanting them to apply the nurses or prescriptions or any of that stuff. My request is just to have a provider available 24/7 for a vitameter so that we have a physician not only for the mental health and medical needs of the detainees, but we also have time for patients.
And just for the rest of the commission's knowledge, we need to talk to this one. Do you have a doctor on board?
Right, I do have one now. He's doing very well, but I guess we have to have RFP. Cannot let go. Right now, we do have a provider available 24/7.
Question from the commission? No, I think it's something we need. I mean, we just, you know, if we want to have a legitimate, you know, detention center, then this is one of the things that we must have in place. So I would move that we allow RFP 2022-05 to be given as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let's do a roll call, both.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Can you, Commissioner, run?
Item number 13, discuss take action on resolution 2022-33, which is policy for the acceptance of debit slash credit cards for payment, property taxes, solid waste, and other county services. Go on.
Morning, Commissioners, County Manager, Mike Clark. So this is a new requirement that has been required by D F A this year. It is to keep us compliant with the new state statute. This is something that we've actually been accepting debit cards and credit cards for payment and account services and to use solid waste, records, deeds, license, collection of property taxes, payments. We've been, we've actually had this in place for a while. So this is just basically to put it in policy and submit it to D F A for approval. This is part of the budget process this year. So I did work with the clerk, treasurer's office, manager's office, and this is the policy that we have currently in place.
So basically, we're just adopting a policy or something like that?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm actually surprised that that's the case because when I've paid my property taxes in the past, I've not been provided the opportunity to put it on a credit card. And, you know, I guarantee, my wife uses those points on credit cards to pay for our vacation. I guarantee you she'd be doing it if it was allowed. So maybe in policy, we allow it, but we don't have the infrastructure to provide it, or...
We actually have a contract. We had a contract in place about over the past five years. It is through Forte. I'm not sure if you can do it in the man, in the treasurer's office on the phone, but you should have access to it on the county website.
Boy, I'm surprised.
Mr. Chairman and all Commissioners, Jonas, so what we do in our office, if somebody calls and asks us to provide them 50 copies or provide them a copy, we do go through Forte. We do not actually have a machine, which I would love to have to have those in the office because any more people don't deal with a lot of checks and a lot of cash. It's either credit or a debit card. So what we do is we have to go online to accept the payment and then they get a copy of the receipt mailed, emailed to them. And then, once we get that receipt, then we will, we will email them the copies. So we, as far as having a swipe machine in the office, only think we don't have that.
So is, why not? Why don't we have those machines?
I couldn't tell you. I know with the contract that we have, we've had in place, I would say for at least seven years, is to Forte and from what I understand it is you do have to do that. That's so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I agree with the clerk's office. I use that personally myself. I guess my only thought was property taxes was the place that I wasn't aware that that was an option. Because it does, if that's true, and it is an option, and you're saying it's available on the website?
Yes.
Okay. But my, because that alleviates my other concerns because I thought these were going to be new services, which I was actually excited about because just like what Madam Clark said, most people use debits or credit cards to pay for things these days. And I was concerned about the fees associated with them, whether those fees have been budgeted or not.
So those fees, and this is actually kind of what is discussed in the actual policy itself, is it does actually reserve the right for Colfax County to assess any fees that are assessed by the third party. So I can't totally tell you that those fees are being put into general fund or if they're just being enough to wash what we are being charged as the, as a third party.
That's pretty common practice, though. I mean, every time, if I use a credit card somewhere else and stuff, I get charged a fee by that merchant and things of this nature. So I think that that's common practice. I'm just surprised we haven't had a policy of this already.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm not surprised by the fees either, as long as they're just simply recovering costs. One of the things that I can tell you, because when I was at the Village of Angel Fire, this was about four years ago, we implemented a system where all fees could be paid online through, and it directly linked into our accounting system. So the fees were all posted. And I can tell you it was a significant time saver for our staff and increased the accuracy, actually helped us eliminate some audit findings we had for holding on to checks for too long. So that technology is a great technology. And the thing I do recall about the fees was that you couldn't just say whatever the fees are for this credit card, like it's 3.5% or whatever they're charging, I'm going to charge you that. It had to be a numerable amount that you had to designate. So you had to say it's going to be this percent of your fees or it's going to be $5 or something so that people would be able to calculate that prior to making the purchase. So there are some rules around that, that it's not just a spray. And what we found is we set up the fee structure so that we actually didn't cover 100% of it. We covered 80 to 85%. And we felt that that was more than justifiable by the time savings that we had in allowing people to pay via credit card. And also to have a system where it's automatically paid, you'd be surprised how many people will take advantage of that. And, you know, we don't have to worry about collections. We don't have to worry. We can be more accurately rely on our cash flow when you set up a system like that. So...
Yeah, you know, we don't collect the fees actually if they're assessed on a credit card as disclosed on payment, prior to payment. On section three, under number three, it says convenience and transaction fee. A convenience fee may be charged to the customer for not trying to payment. The convenience fee may be calculated to cover all of the payments, transactions cost as well as additional direct costs borne by Colfax County. Colfax County fee collection will be in accordance with the Colfax County pricing schedule with a credit card provider. Currently, like I said, we do have an existing account with Forte and their fee schedule is actually provided on those days as well.
And so we have a policy that specifies that amount? Is that something that's...
It's, it's put in the fee schedule. The reason why we left it, I didn't refer to this fee schedule as Forte's fee schedule, is just in the event we ever change to a different vendor processes, give payments. I didn't want to have to rewrite the policy. But if, in the end, in the end, if we ever change the vendor at least one, we would just follow that vendor schedule.
Jonas, let me, let me ask this question. Do we have any idea how many people actually use a credit card?
I don't. That's probably a good question to ask the treasurer's office. I do know that we have received several payments for solid waste that have been also paid through the credit card and that comes directly from this, from the treasurer's office. So they receive, they're in receipt of the C H file, they get the notification, they send it to us, I just post it to the accounts. Just in the solid waste department, I have probably posted at least 20 transactions.
And that's through our website?
And that is through the website.
What I'm talking about the website is I, you know, I have a lot of people complain and have complained in the past, it's hard to navigate the website itself. And hopefully then we get that updated or updated in some way, but are we willing to do both? Is the commission thinking about doing both? Have all the elected officials, offices that collect monies, get a credit card machine along with this? Is that a way that we collect money through credit cards? I mean, does it cost, would it cost the county any money to get these machines?
I think that's, I believe that's included in, in the transaction fee, that, which is, you know, when they do that. My question is, or my, I said, what we're doing here is for the benefit of the rate payer, the taxpayer or whatever, make it easier for them to pay that. And it's also some benefit to the county, too. I said, my only concern is that, you said, like you said, it'd be only charged 80%. You know, I mean, what you did up there in Angel Fire, and so that's something I'm not in favor, but I think that, you know, I think that all the fees that are associated with this type of transaction should be borne by the rate payer, the taxpayer. Or, in my opinion, we could be in violation of the Anti-Donation Act if we don't do that. I mean, that'd be my biggest, my biggest concern. So all of them in favor of this. And I think with that, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution 2022-33, which includes what I just said.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second, and what I would like, my final comment would be to ask the manager, with your permission, to look into our credit card processing system to see how I can improve because Chairman's idea is exactly right. This is a benefit to our community, but it is a benefit to the county in that it just improves operations.
All right, any other comments or questions? Thank you, man.
And would you call, you might say, fortify the day, maybe, transactions for using the credit card?
I wouldn't. I'm going to start using, they didn't know. I didn't know for property tax. I knew, I don't want a solid waste to, to get, to get away from the goal.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, by Bobby, seconded by Commissioner Weir. Do a roll call.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Commissioner Doos?
Yes.
Thank you, Jonas.
Thank you.
Item 14, discuss take action on resolution 2022-34, which is the budget adjustment various funds.
So this is the S P R final budget resolution, budget adjustment resolution. It's pretty likely, it's a lot cool for every transaction. but come up with a lot of features, mostly due to the increase of expenditures within a lot of wildfires, due to, of course, the additional fires that we had to do. Also, we adjusted some of the grants that we have received, the increasing grants within the AS program, the WA program, and also increased some of the expenditures that were related to the increase in grants, the increase in revenue. And also the additional expenses that were not budgeted through the Angel Fire Airport, as well as a few unbudgeted transfers, one of which was what Commissioner Ware, I'm talking about earlier, the unbudgeted transfer from the Environmental G L T into this wild waste apartment, with a now of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that this is normal procedures that D F A requires local representatives to do. And with that, I would, we adopt Resolution 2022-35.
Second.
Motion on the second, I'll do a little call.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, discuss take action on Resolution number 2022-35, 2021-2022 final quarter ending, financial report year ending June 30th, 2022.
So this is the final fourth quarter Treasury's report, as required by D F A. So the total investments for this fiscal year is six million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Total revenues for this fiscal year, seventeen million five hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Total expenditures, sixteen million seven hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents, for any balances of twenty-five million three hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Again, this is the D F A requirement that we do annually or quarterly or whatever. And this is particularly happens to be at the end of the fiscal year. Now, we move that we adopt Resolution 2022-35.
Second.
Motion on the second.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Item number sixteen. Discuss take action on Resolution 2022-36, 2022-2023 budget adoption.
So this resolution is just to formally adopt the budget as presented this morning for the 2022-23 fiscal year?
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the most that we adopt Resolution 2022-36 as we discussed that earlier.
Second.
Motion on the second, as we do a little call.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonas.
Item number seventeen, discuss take action on ordinance 2022-02, amending ordinance 2017-01, which is the personnel policy hiring process. Is this the one that we outbacked?
This is the one we've been discussing.
Yeah, I think we have been discussing. I think it's up for adoption.
Just a background check.
Yeah, this should be our, really our third presentation, second public hearing.
It should be able to adopt it today. Mr. Chairman, I think that we adopt ordinance 2022-02, amending ordinance 2017-01, personnel policy hiring process.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that, that I do have a question for the manager.
Go ahead.
Mr. Manager, how does this fit into the reconstructed personnel policy that was, that you had presented to the commission a week or so ago?
Essentially, we're going to be, actually, that personnel policy was changed in 2020 and actually was presented to the county. Unfortunately, no action is taken, but it does protect the county. It provides better coverage than the one that we're using. And what we're looking at is we'll probably just introduce this to our county attorney as well. He's the one that actually drafted this policy. And we'll include that in that new personnel policy.
So just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, so we've adopted, recently, we've adopted, if we adopt this, two different sections of our personnel policy. One, this one related to background checks when hiring people. The other one, the chain of command. And so the policy that was written in 2020 that we're now, that we, I guess, will be considering, didn't include these two changes. And so is the procedure going to be that we're going to get, because the other policies extensive, it includes everything, right? The one from 2020. It had chapters on both of these items within it. They weren't as extensive as these two are. So we're going to get another personnel policy ordinance that's going to come before the commission that we're going to have to vote to approve, and it will include these two sub paragraphs, I guess you would call them. And when will we see that on the agenda?
You know, we're working, I'm working with the, I've already got the version with the county attorney and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, so we'll have that ready.
Okay, and, you know, I know you're doing your best and you had a lot on your plate when you came in. So I just want to express urgency, and that, that policy is excellent, by the way. I, I'm not a, I'm not an expert like our chairman is on personnel issues, but if you read it, I mean, it's, it takes everything into account.
There's, there's no doubt. And we need to, and I agree with you, we need to get it implemented as soon as possible with the two amendments. Once again, I think your final product is going to be outstanding and outstanding in the state.
I think it would have solved some issues we had last year had it been in place.
I agree.
Just a comment, we've been trying to get that personnel policy for the last two and a half, three years. So fast, just always getting some setbacks, I don't know why. But, you know, I went through that whole policy, made a whole lot of mad native verb changes on it, and it was never completed. That was one of our problems, it was never completed. I asked for that to be completed many times.
Well, it's been done.
We're finally almost there, so. Yeah, I guess to answer your question, again, is this will be added to the personnel policy itself? And that's a pretty common to, to add personnel ordinances to a personnel policy. So if they have to be extended or added to. So anyway, we have a motion by Commissioner, the dude, second by Commissioner Ware, as we do a little call.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
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 Item number eighteen, discuss take action on Colfax County ES program, fiscal year 2023, E C E C D. Is that S O Y or S O W? Should I say S O Y?
No, that's spoken word.
All right, home visiting program. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. This one is our E C E C D grant. It stays exactly the same as last year physically, except instead of fifty families, we're going to serve fifty-five this year.
Was this on our agenda last time? Did we order that? Think we have the back, it was a name change?
Yeah, well, that's the next one.
Was that the next one?
Yeah, this, this one, yeah, I was, I was sick and, yeah, that email I was giving, I forget this.
All right, any questions from the commission?
Now, we move that we approve the spoken word for Colfax County ES program as presented.
Second.
Motion on the second, do a little call over.
Yes.
Now, this is the one.
This is the one we outbacked. Change of name, nineteen. Discuss take action on Colfax County ES program home visitor service agreements.
That's the name change.
We want to share that.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
I think the only question we've done is the name change. So unless we wanted to go back. I would move that we approve the Colfax County ES program home visitor service.
Second, any comments or questions? Say none, go call over.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number twenty, discuss take action on dispatch agreement with City of Rattler.
Is this an extension of, is this an extension of something that we do?
Yes.
Probably a yearning thing, isn't it?
It's a yearning thing, and it expires actually at the end of July and just renews again in August. It's the same announcement, I think.
And did the dollar amount didn't change?
No, it's the same.
Yeah, it's been, works, works well for the county, doesn't it, Jonas?
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for our marshal, Cordeanis. So do we have a separate agreement for fire dispatch?
I believe it's all lumped together with the sheriff's.
I'm sorry?
I believe it's all lumped together with the sheriff's agreement.
The only reason I ask is in our burn application policy process, I don't know that it's an official policy. It, one of the steps is that once you are ready, if you're, if you put in a burn application and it gets approved, once you're ready to actually commit to burn, it instructs you to call the Red River Dispatch.
That's for the burn highway side. On our side, it's, they're instructed to call Dispatch here in Rattler.
So I guess that was my.
We've got two different burn departments, one for the west side of the county and one for the east side of the county.
Okay, so that Red River one's covered under a separate agreement with Red River.
Yes.
And does it renew annually also?
I'm not sure exactly how that one works. That's to be enchanted circle. I don't believe they're being charged anything on the.
Oh, maybe we should be quiet.
Mr. Chairman, sir, does this agreement work for you and has it worked for you?
So far, it's been working. I have seen what's in it. Like, you know, probably come next year, we'll probably revisit that because of a lot of technologies that are changing with record management systems and cat dispatches and burn happening all over the state.
Well, I see that City of Rattler will still be responsible for all the maintenance and things of this nature. So I was just wondering if you've had any issues, but so far, this agreement has worked for you?
Yes, sir.
That's all I need to know. I would move, I would move that we approve this dispatch agreement with City of Rattler as presented.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Say none, go call over.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Commissioner, yes, chairman?
Yes.
This is the one that was said there.
Yeah, I've been asked for this to be tabled. There's still some, some talks and need to be, some more information that has to be looked into. So I've been asked to table this one, item number twenty-one.
Move to table.
Second.
Motion to table item twenty-one, second.
I did have a comment, I did.
Go ahead.
So I'm glad that this is being tabled because I noticed that the, our legal advice included a formula for the monthly fees, but the agreement still said five hundred dollars. So there's conflict, so.
Well, and not only that, but there, there's been questions asked of me of do we own the property, the land? And how to, there's a whole bunch of questions on, and I'll tell you why I'm bringing this up. And I'm going to ask the county manager, maybe have the attorney check into this because there is now a big group of about eighty people that are now playing pickleball. They're playing pickleball on the tennis courts. One of the people that are actually heading that off is my wife. And so she's got a big group there. In fact, they're having a tournament this weekend, just for your knowledge. And it's actually attracting a lot of people. Where are you getting people from? I shouldn't say me, because I don't play. I'm afraid to get hurt playing pickleball. I really don't, I don't play. But anyway, people are having a lot of fun doing it. There's people that are up in the age of eighty that are playing that, that game. And, but I've been asked, because they're going to have, they're going to have a tournament there Saturday, and they want to put a porta potty up there because there's no, nowhere to use the restroom there. So I contacted the porta potty guy this weekend and I talked to him. And, but we got to make sure that it's kosher for everyone. And one of the best places to put that one porta potty would be for the next three nights and then get rid of it. Because then they'll have to go back indoors when winter comes around. But one of the questions that's been asked is who owns that property? That we're talking, the people that were talking about this lease. I, my wife has talked to the school. The school's not even clear on who owns the property or who owns the building. Because now they want that from the county manager asking, you know, can we buy or rent? Because they want to do some stuff there. I'm not going to get into that right now, but I think that's the report the county manager will give later on. But so there's question on, you know, there's a lot of properties that the county owns that I'm not sure, and I, I'm not sure how we acquired some of these properties. And if we own the buildings, do we own the land? And talk to the superintendent, they don't, they're not quite sure if the high school owns it or the city owns it. We're still trying to track down a whole bunch of history on who owns the property. Now, I, I think the county owns the building for sure.
And who do you?
Through whatever grants were received many years ago as the fiscal agent. Just like Bobby's building, the county owns that. And of course, Commissioner, the dude would love for us to somehow transfer that county building back to his organization. I'll let you speak in a minute. But the, the problem there, there is, and it would save the county a ton of money because we spend a lot of money maintaining those buildings. You know, whether it's a change of act or they need renovation. You know, at some point, I think this commission needs to look at that. And I think he's going to have to probably get a meeting with D F A at some point to try to figure out, in my opinion, how do we get rid of some of these buildings that we don't get any income on and we're taking care of the maintenance on them? And I think that someone like Commissioner, the dude's organization would love to renovate that building. As I talked to him many years ago, before I was a commissioner, why would he put money into a building that doesn't belong to him? So at some point, we need to look at, with our attorney, how do we get, in my opinion, I don't know how we look at this, but I would think that we need to get rid of some of these buildings that we're sticking money into county tax monies that we have, there's no way we're going to get any money back on them. On this one, we get a little bit of rent. Bobby's, we don't get any rent. But we take care of the maintenance of that building. Not the judicial center, but where the DA's office is at right now, we have an agreement, only because the state statute says that they have to give us so much money or an attorney or equivalent to it monies back to the county because we let the DA's office in that building. So they gave us so much money every year in exchange. But, and that one's fine, but there's, there's other buildings that we, we don't receive any monies for it. And we're sticking a ton of money into these buildings and having them maintained. But that doesn't make sense to me. Never asked for the seven years I've been on this commission, so. But anyway, I'll shut my mouth. I'll let you speak. You probably have some very good comments to make, so we'll listen to what you have to say.
I wish I, I wish I had a lot of information for you, but I actually have a question.
Oh, okay.
Have you, I understand that Julie Green is the facility manager for the city. Has she been helpful in identifying the information on properties for you as to who owns what? That was, she was tasked with that, as far as identifying all vacant anything, whether it's residential or commercial, county-owned building or whatnot. I've seen her making several rounds throughout town addressing different things with, you know, different infrastructure. She was over doing a building inspection at the Aquatic Center a week and a half ago. To, you know, determine what's going on there, their needs might be. So she might be a great. To, you know, determine what's going on there, their needs might be, so she might be a great phone call for you to, to do first. So that's my first recommendation. Also, I wanted to bring to the commission, I'm sorry, can you hear me? I, I sound like a ho.
I think you're okay, I think you're in a fair.
On August first, I don't know if any of you are receiving Row Rato's monthly bulletin, but on August first, at the convention center, Rato Main Street is holding an M R A meeting, a metro bulletin redevelopment area. The Coors building is up for discussion on that, so basically the city is experiencing the same, the same thing. But they don't want to just sell the building to anyone else, which is one of my recommendations to them is to, be careful, you know, obviously who you give it to, because what has happened and why we're in this particular predicament is that we sell it to someone and they sit on it while they think about it for the next five, ten years. And now we've just put ourselves back in the same bowl, empty bowl, so to speak. So, but Brenda Perry over at Main Street has done, and she has reached out to her resources, which is Main Street nationally, and they are going to be coming, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's going to be a Zoom or if they're going to physically be here, but I would highly recommend that if you are available on August first, Monday, at five forty-five, there will be a light dinner. And there will be discussion on an M R A for the Coors building. And I believe what it's going to end up being, in short, is basically an R P for that, which could be the building. So somebody would come in and have to bid, they give Bobby the building, hopefully, for like a tower, you know, that's in theory. As long as they did something very specific with it, they have to come in with a very specific plan for that building. And if they don't, the city would get it back in extremely short predetermined amount of time. So that is the very general overview of what that M R A would be, but I don't know if that is something that could apply to the city. I'm sorry, county owned buildings as well, I can't imagine that they wouldn't, but it might look a little different. So if you guys are available, I'd like to refer to you.
Okay, thank you. So you said seven, five forty-five P M on August first, convention center.
I keep forward, that's the county manager in the form of that's given.
Yeah, anything that we do that any, any, whether it's the county or the city, it's still going to get approved from D F A. They have to prove it also.
Question for you, and then I want to comment on this, okay, where is the Coors building?
Uh, Coors building is on First Street, which is why Main Street can help address it because it's in the Main Street district.
The thing is, I always thought the Coors building was the old tennis shoe factory.
You guys have been here longer than I have, so I don't know.
Nobody remembers the tennis shoe factory.
Uh, it just, uh, it's here.
He used to sell five dollar congresses.
That's because they used to bake, you know, other workers are from China.
It just is, join us to vision how the city owned Coors building could be redeveloped via public-private partnership to further revitalization downtown Rato. So she didn't give the address for the Coors building, so I apologize.
I have no idea which building.
I believe, isn't it over there by the, by the museum, or maybe at the museum? Sure, I think, I think it's, that's why I wasn't really, really sure. I didn't, my mind.
If that's.
I got a picture of it.
I believe it is just to the south of the stakeout.
That little thing, oh, please. It looks like a little bar or something.
Oh, that's where the Coors building is, okay, I know where that's. I know where that's.
So is that why they call it the Coors building? Because there's an old bar and everybody drinking.
Thank you. Anyway, you should turn the mic. No, that was my only question today.
Do you have a comment?
Just what we were talking about earlier, I think you and I had an extended conversation on, on these C D B G grants and all this stuff and how they work. The county got involved, I just couldn't relate to my mind, as our sponsor. Because in order for any entity to be able to apply for those grants, you have to, it has to be a governmental entity or a municipal entity. And that's how the county got involved, or else I couldn't have wrote that grant and asked for that building. So I, I wrote all our grants, in fact, I've written three separate C D B G grants for, for where I'm at right now. That building that I own, that I have over there is a big deal on three different bases. So county was our sponsor. I administered those grants, I wrote them, you know, and got them and and lobbied them and things of this nature, which, you know, it's, this, me, is fast, but I mean.
So my, so my question to you is, since you, you own the building, you actually don't own the building, you just, you, you just make, you're not going to maintain it because we maintain the building.
No, I maintain it on a daily basis.
On a daily basis, but if the major goes out on a week, the county.
Depends on what it is. The big number items, you know, I do, like if an H VAC unit or something, yeah. Because only, only for the reasons that I mentioned earlier, I don't have a problem doing that, but it's, I'm just like, you know, I, I think we should own the building. I mean, it does, makes no sense for the county to own that building.
It doesn't. So let me ask you this, who owns the, who owns the land?
The city, City of Rato, our, our agreement with the county, and then if we go back, is our agreement that, that we will subside, we'll be able, as long as we keep our corporate name, we'll be able to live and maintain that building, okay, and live in that building. Should we ever stop being what we're doing, then everything reverts back to the city. That was an agreement that was made between the city and the county, okay? Now, I think we should meet with money, you and I possibly need to go to D F A and say, look, this is an ongoing problem for not just Colfax County, this is throughout the state where, you know, the way the C D B process was structured is that, you know, municipalities and governmental entities are sponsors and they get stuck with buildings. That was not the intent of the grant. The intent of the grant was to help, you know, infrastructure, capital outlet. You know, and, and that's what we used it for. And once that is done, then it should somehow revert to what it was, what it was intended to be used for. You know, and take it off the county, county rolls, put it on the other rolls so that we can actually collect some benefit from those buildings or, you know, whether it be property tax or things of this nature, okay? I brought this up about team builders at our last meeting because they are, number one, that building was never intended for them to be in that building, okay? It was not built for that, it was built for SOI, which is a service organization for youth which went defunct, you know, and things of this nature. That's why the building reverted back to the county. So in this particular case, the county owns that building. And, because there was never an agreement, a side agreement saying that if it never quit being that, that it would revert, revert to the schools or the city. So it actually, the county owns that building long stock and barrel, so the county can do whatever they want to do with it, okay? So my point was, is that the difference between us and team builders, they're a for-profit, we're a not-for-profit. And, and I, and I think that, you know, and I wanted to, legally, to see if whether or not we could rent that to them for a value that is less than what is should be rented for, and if we'd be in violation of the anti-donation law. If we didn't get, you know, the recommended amount or, or what the appraisal rate was for the building, that was, that was my, that was why I brought that up. I think that five hundred dollars a month is really, really cheap and, and, you know, and I don't mind anybody making any money. But if you're a for-profit, then that money goes into their companies, okay? I think that the equal share of that money come to the county, I don't mind them making money, but I think they need to pay their equal share. And that was why I brought that up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me ask one more question. And I know, County Manager, you went and looked at that, I think with, with Robert. Was the Robert you took with all the maintenance?
I actually took Fred.
Fred, okay.
And the reason, and I believe, I'm sure you're a little bit correct, that is, accounting and property, building and property. The one thing that, I was actually contacted by the Rato School District and they are expanding, they've got some money to expand. They were looking at maybe leasing or possibly purchasing the building. I met them, I met the financial officer and the chief maintenance person at that building. And one thing that I, we had probably a thirty-minute discussion in the parking lot while I was at Team Builders. There was, I'm just going to say that is a, there's definitely a need in the community, I think, for mental health. And to help address some mental health concerns. In the half hour that I was there, I would say probably fifteen to twenty people entered and left the building. So it is a, it's definitely operating, there were cars parked in the parking lot. The school, like I said, was interesting in looking at the property as well. The way that we left it is, I think what we, what, what I asked the school to do, and one of the reasons that I, another reason that I felt we should have tabled this, is that I wanted to make an appointment with Team Builders and actually see if they will be going or if they have space available, and that, going to maybe share some room with the school. In a way we could accommodate both. The school does have some grant money where they could actually kind of refurbish the inside of those, that area. And so anyway, that's kind of the direction that we're looking at at that time. The reason we tabled it the first time is because specifically the commission felt that this could be an anti-donation issue with Team Builders, and so we sent that back to our county attorney. The county attorney, if you recall, actually changed the law of the wording and had a lot of blue line additions. And just so you know, that, that was actually to, the verbiage changes and the amended changes would actually prevent us from being in the anti-donation, violating anti-donation law. So that's why all those changes were made by June. But I think at this point, we need a little bit more information and if you'll kind of look into that and I can be back with the commission.
The only question I have is it's always been titled Team Builders' Behavior of Health. Are those two different entities in there or is that one?
It's one.
Do we know that for sheriff?
They've been around for quite some time. In fact, they were, it was a big deal about four, five years ago where there, they were actually in trouble with their governor's offices trying to get them to say that they own the building Medicaid and things of this nature and that and all of that, I suppose. So, not, but I know that, that was, and they made the news along with eight other providers of the whole state of New Mexico. And actually, I'm surprised they came back, to be honest with you. I thought they closed down, but then when I saw this, they go, oh, they're back. Which, I don't have anything against them professionally or administratively, I'm just saying that, you know, with the county, we're here to conduct a business as well. We're not here to, you know, save the world, so to speak. I think that, you know, I think we talked a little bit earlier about wanting to, you know, disperse some of our properties. You know, I mean, this is, if the schools are interested in buying it, then I think that's something that you should really be looking at. Or, you know, we're charged then what the commercial rent for that type of building is. I think, I think it's, you know, it's either they make the profit or the county gets some of the, you know, some of the benefits that it should get as a result of this stuff. I mean, that's, the county, how they, as I mentioned earlier, they got the building because they sponsored the grant. I know, I wrote the grant on behalf of SOI. But when it quit being SOI, then it reverted back to the county for whatever purpose they want. That's why I know that the county owns that building. You know, and things of this nature. I think that, you know, I don't think that, I don't mind the county helping, you know, not-for-profit agencies that are up to go, when you're a for-profit agency, to me, that puts you in a whole different category as far as I'm concerned. You know, with respect to, you know, what should happen and shouldn't happen. And that's the reason I brought that up. And I think that the county manager, I think that, you know, I, I think you're wise to explore all the options that we have. Meet with both entities and come back with a recommendation for this mission. Absolutely.
The only other comment that Natalie is on that second, whereas on the first page of the agreement, the lease agreement, if you look at it, it says Team Builders' Behavior of Health, it's H E L T H. So that's a misspelling there, we should have corrected.
Okay, oh, I see.
So, Mr. Chairman, I want to comment on this, not just this Team Builders, but on the whole asset valuation process. Is, we've had enough turmoil in this commission to last us for quite a while. And I just want us to tread lightly and make sure that anything we do, any transfers we do, number one, make fiscal sense, financial sense, and number two, make legal sense.
Of course.
I think that's why we're doing this, you know. I think it's, you know, I think we, you know, over and over and over, I've preached over here that what our main function is and that's the judiciary aspect of being in this community and I think that we're not, if we don't take a look into some of this stuff, then we're not doing our job. So I think that we're doing it and that's why I like the idea of tabling it because we don't have all the answers for all the questions that we have.
Okay.
I think we have a motion in the second to table this issue. So I think we need to.
I thought we were, we have both, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have, mostly Bobby's second, by Mr. Ware.
Mr. Ware?
Yes.
Commissioner Cordeanus?
Yes. Item number twenty-two, Commissioner Doppit. Do you have anything, Mr. Ware? Mr. Ware?
So, Mr. Chairman, the only thing is that there's just ongoing work in relationship to the fire. Fortunately, the majority of it is not affecting Colfax County. But in that, we were involved in the fire process to the extent we were. There's still a lot going on, there's still a lot of issues in Morret County with flooding. FEMA, I mean, I get daily, I'm sure you get all the too, contacts from FEMA. And, you know, number one, Morret is our neighbor, we rely on Morret to some extent, at least in the valley. We have a lot of workers that live in Morret County, so we have a vested interest in that county's success. I know we have been working with them, I just think we should continue to do so. And I know Thomas is doing a great job, I wish he was here to, so we could give him some accolades on the watershed for Miami. Miami-Redado area watershed and he's working hard at trying to get things re-planting there. So I would just say that this fire is not going away, it's still only at ninety-three percent containment, which I, with all this rain, I imagine is just, they can't put it at a hundred percent containment because then the feds will stop funding them. And that's why it's at ninety-three percent, but it, these issues are going to be with us for a while. And, you know, it, I don't know, of course, it wasn't as big of a fire, didn't get as much attention, but, you know, it, it seems like we're doing a lot more with this than we did with the youth park fire and it, and I'm not sure why that is, maybe it's just my perception, but, I mean, there's a lot of resources still going on in that scar. And, I don't know, it just didn't seem like we got the attention like at youth park. And I'll tell you, the other thing that's disappointing to me is if you watched the news yesterday, there's a new fire in California that's burning. And when they said, yeah, fourteen thousand acres, I said, what? Why is this even on the news? You know, we had three hundred thousand acres burning and I, I didn't see it on CBS evening news or whatever. I mean, maybe it was there and I just missed it, but, you know. It, it's a little disappointing that the state of New Mexico didn't get the national recognition that it, that it did. And hopefully the feds will make up for that with, with this new bill that our legislators are pushing to require, even though the president said it, the legislator, legislations are just passed, the House just passed and hopefully it will pass the Senate quickly, a bill that will result in the total reimbursement for all directly related expenditures as opposed to FEMA's. directly related expenditures, as opposed to FEMA standards, because FEMA standards don't get you back what you had. If you, you know, if you didn't have fire insurance, or now flood insurance, FEMA's gonna put a Band-Aid on a scar that needs stitches, and so this legislation is, I think, is stitches, and hopefully it'll pass the Senate quickly, and it's, it's, but I also think it's a lesson learned, and I hope that we stay on top of, there's so much thinning on Colfax County that needs to happen, and we do have some people like Rick Smith and some others that are actively pursuing that, and we need to be, stay aware of it, and, you know, what I don't want to see is we all forget about this two years from now. This needs to, the whole thinning, as a matter of fact, I know we're strapped, I don't like to spend money, but, you know, with the consultation with Nick and with Thomas, I think we ought to consider whether the county should have a forester or not, because what happens is, right now, it's in the news, and we're all into it, and we're pursuing it, then other things come up, it gets forgotten, and then until the next big fire. And, you know, right now, with everything that's burned, the next big fire in Colfax County, and this year is the only thing left to burn. So, I mean, Dallas County too, but, I just, I just think it's something, I know if something happened this year, we don't have the money, but we should start thinking about next year's budget, is can we afford, and does it make sense to have a forester in Colfax County? That, that's your job, is to push even the private landowners to thin and prevent major catastrophes like we have this year.
If they already have people strobing, they might have an extra three hundred thousand dollars to hire a forester, though. We give it to the airport.
There you go. Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. I can address some of the stuff that I was talking about, I think that the, the reason it's not a hundred percent status is because the government started the fire, okay? And the reason that U Part didn't get the attention that it got is because the government didn't start that fire, and they started this one. So, you know, and they knew, and the government knows that irrespective of what they say, lawsuits are lining up, they've already started, I think the last, I remember, there was thirty-five active lawsuits, and I know this is gonna go, as far as national attention, it was on the news quite significantly. As a matter of fact, I have friends of mine in Las Vegas that are shaking hands with the president, and have pictures of that, and all that stuff, so the president has not visited Yosemite, yet he did come here, so it, it's gotten a pretty good deal, and I think that we need to update our ICIP with respect to capital lottery requests. I mean, the government's really, really hot on this issue, I think this is a good opportunity for us to get some, to get some monies for infrastructure, and even for, like you said, even if they awarded Colfax County a shitload, I should say a shitload, no, I'm sorry. They ordered the county a ton of money to do the, the thinning and all this stuff, then at that point, we can use a forester to, you know, spearhead that situation, so that's why, that's, I just wanted to make some clarification there, and I have nothing else. I'll make some adjustments.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your color, for commenting. The only guy I have is, I just, I just want to report that, if I get tired of hearing this, but I'm in constant, constant contact with the county manager, I almost hate him, or he's either sending me an email, or he sends me a text, I'm, I'm back and forth with him on whatever, wherever he's out, whatever he's doing. He's made a, on a few changes here in the third floor, and, and I just appreciate his work that he's done, and I'll go on him and say, I teach to me, like, I don't want you to get bigoted about him, but I think you're gonna, you're gonna come out to be one of the best county managers that this county has seen so far, so I just want to report to, for those that are listening, he's doing a heck of a job, and I'm very happy, he stepped in in a very difficult position, and he's cleaned up a lot of messes that we have, and continues to make a lot of good changes. What I like the most is our staff up here is, you know, I come up here any time, they're all very happy and smiley and cheerful, and, and it's, I'm glad to see that. I think everyone is very comfortable in their positions here now, and I think it's because of the management that we have. I think the county manager's been doing an excellent job, and I know he'll continue to do that, because he likes a challenge, I can see that very clearly, and, and he continues to do a heck of a job, so I just want to thank you, this meeting, for all the work, you've been kissing her in the head, I know you have, and you're early in the campaign, I can tell you that you're making, and as county manager, I just want to thank you completely.
Well, thank you for those kind words. If you'd like, I can go ahead and do a quick briefing. First of all, I do want to thank my staff, we have been working very diligently, very hard. I want to thank Jonah, I know she's helped several county departments as far as meeting deadlines and stuff like that, reporting reports. I do want to thank Morton, she actually did one upmanship on me today, I used to bring doughnuts, and she brought breakfast burritos, so anyway, we were just like, good job. I want to thank Robert and his staff, when we began to look at this airport, and Robert and I went up there, it was very obvious that Scott was very concerned about some of the issues. One of the biggest challenges he had is that they have an over-fuel truck, and it had been left unserviceable and unoperable, and Robert was able to get that thing going. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to share this with you, running, being both with you and the chairman, so. So I just happened to run into Scott at the auto store yesterday, and we were talking about what was going on at the airport, and he said, but I don't want you to worry about it, because I'm not gonna let Monty down. I thought that was a great comment.
Wow. Thank you for sharing that, sir. And he has been doing a really good job, and he's really taken it serious, and even in our forum here, some of those issues that were identified in that I-ten report, he's already corrected. And Robert, thank you again, I know you go a long way, and with the process, and you have fixed. I want to thank Sheriff, but no, Fire Marshal, I know I've been very busy, and at the same time, we've had issues with our power, and repairs, insurance, and I appreciate the leadership that both of you have shown by stepping up and kind of taking, taking that project on. I also want to thank Anita for showing up. Anita is one of the individuals that I'm working with, with Raul Retome, she's the director there, and on the grant, the grant information, was actually Kathy, her president, that emailed me that information. We're actually, like I said, trying to flush it out, see what we can do, and just been working with Anita on that, and hopefully that will come to some fruition. Once again, the meeting with Mike Proline yesterday, the FFA, the FAA and Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division, was actually, I think, a very good meeting. Some of the issues that were addressed in the, in the report I shared with our partners, they had already gotten the report, and that's why they're doing their, I think, unannounced inspection tomorrow. But I think, once again, we'll be totally honest, we're letting them know where we're at on the airport, and because of the meeting yesterday, I think everybody will agree that they're willing to work with us, there is money available, we're willing to perform a considerable amount of money. One of the things that Mike Proline is going to do, based on the report, he wasn't even aware that the flooding system was as bad as it is, so once again, we're not looking at a fix, we're looking at total replacements, and he's actually working on the capital improvement plan to add those costs into that. So I think it was a very positive meeting, and we're gonna continue to meet Thursdays and try to address all those issues. Yesterday, manager's office had, had seven people contact us for interviews, six showed up, they were very positive, they want to come to work. One of the things that I'm looking at doing is working on that E-911 position and combining that with solid waste. Once again, I contacted the state on E-911, we definitely need some help. I was informed that Colfax County shouldn't be doing one report a month, we've done essentially one a year, one report we generated in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, in June of twenty twenty-two. I was also informed that there were two over, around two thousand states in the data entry, so we definitely need some help. The state of New Mexico is gonna come up, catch Colfax County up on that, we're gonna use basically updated computers and software to stay, to stay on top of it. One of the things that I, and this is just, I think, even our emergency manager had it for a while, I think he did a good job, but once again, when you look at the reality of the situation, we do have an account and emergency in the county, his role and duties along with Sheriff and Fire Marshal are protecting lives and property. After that phase, then we get into, once again, financial accountability and making sure that we have justification for resources, and that those resources have been proved, and that we can get reimbursed for those resources. The third phase of that is then water tables and fire mitigation, efforts and things like that. So, once again, E-911 is so vital and so important, we need somebody in there working constantly that is gonna be working on necessarily, necessarily, those kinds of issues. So I think combining that with solid waste, and, Commissioner, we're, based on what I'm finding, is I think it looks like we needed, could have probably done a better job with solid waste through the years, it appears at this point that that probably fell through the cracks in twenty sixteen, we don't really have anybody assigned to do solid waste, and if you don't have somebody assigned accountable, you get the results you're getting. So hopefully, in a very short time, we'll actually have somebody that can take over that aspect, and I do think that the county is, I think we are losing a considerable amount of money by not keeping up, keeping up on that. It looks like we're also looking at administrative assistance and solid waste permission, so we've actually started background checks on some of those individuals, and hopefully we can get those into those positions shortly. Once again, Rogers Tax, we're actually restructuring the Rogers Tax, actually have an desk, Anita, at CCI, Patricia, to help facilitate a meeting with the county of Retome. Somebody is doing a good job of something, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel, and I think the city of Retome, from all indications, are doing, I think, a much better job with Rogers Tax and administering that than the county has, and so I think if we can get some training, even trade some, train some of the board members and stuff like that, and maybe even expand what we're, what we're doing. But I think that needs to be done, and I appreciate the partnership, and it was helping sections, working with me, and helping, helping me look at grant opportunities as well. I was able to talk to our IT director, Homenale, and I've interviewed a few people for the IT director position, it looks like at this point, having a real in-depth discussion with Homenale, he would actually like to stay in that position. He does have other irons in his flyers and other commitments, but I believe that even three days a week, he is totally effective, I know I've talked with the sheriff, I've talked to the warden, I've talked to Nick, and talked to Jonah, and he is very skilled, he is very responsive, so I think we're gonna have a hybrid plan, we'll keep him in a contractual position. We will look at hiring an IT technician, we have some applications on that, and in my discussion with Homenale, he actually wants to mentor and, and grow our next IT director, which I think is a, is a good thing to do. And, Commissioner, we're, when you and I were at the conference, you had contacted a company that's kind of your background, your software and everything, and Homenale was very impressed with that organization, and although it looks like in a different direction, he still wants to, I think, utilize that company, and probably reduce, but still in some capacity, because he, he had only good things to say about the company himself, we're looking at creating that kind of a hybrid. And then last Thursday, Robert and I went to the Mexico Department of Transportation meeting, it was very well-attended, Robert, probably two hundred people were there or more. It was a very positive meeting, I was able to introduce myself as a new Colfax County manager, and I sent greetings to the commissioner there from, from each one of you. In that discussion, we once again talked about the I-27 interchange that's coming, and if you guys recall, traditionally calls, probably several weeks ago, we'd actually sent out an email based on a meeting that Chairman Fernandez and I and Robert attended, and there was this discussion about some of the roundabouts by the engineers, and we had provided feedback that with the truck traffic, it probably wouldn't work, and I think that contributed, they had totally, after the meeting, we went to lunch, and Robert and I had the opportunity to meet with the chief engineer, and they have totally redesigned that, they went from basically a roundabout design to a, was it a diamond design, I believe, Robert, which is a lot more, well, basically, it's a lot more truck-friendly and engineered specifically for truck traffic, and then they're looking at actually changing it from Clayton and actually dropping, bumping the road and actually dropping it onto Second, Seventh Street over near the hospital. So that's where they're gonna do the interchange, I think that would be a very positive thing for the county to see on Retome, because of the traffic going up Main Street. I asked him specifically what the timeline for that was, and I think Robert and I were a little surprised, he said twenty-three, twenty-four, which is kind of what we were told at the town. So this, at least at this point, this doesn't seem to be a fall-off issue, something that they're talking about, they are really looking diligently to develop this, like I said, they're looking at starting work in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, they are moving that up. Other than that, once again, we've been busy, we'll continue to move forward.
Before I adjourn, just maybe thank you for becoming manager, I was very good at work. Bobby, you had asked, I think last meeting on a report with the flooding of the building, I met with one of the workers here, maintenance Carlos, and I'm gonna go down there if I can, I tried last week, but I talked to Carlos, there's very minimal amount of water coming into that drain, there's hardly any flooding whatsoever. coming into that drain, there's hardly any flooding whatsoever. So I don't know what happened with that water, that everybody thought that it was a aquifer that broke, and that's why we're getting all that flooding down in the basement on the north, east and west side of this building. But I, I've been told there's no, no flooding whatsoever.
But it was a western pipeline, I think.
So I don't know if you get that, county manager, but I'd like to go down there and some time to be able to get that to see, because, you know, I think we're all, the commission's still pretty well concerned about, you know, the, if there was any dabbies there, if there are, it's very minimal, but if it stopped, that's good, that's a good thing. Other than that, I'd ask to adjourn this meeting, motion to adjourn.
Quite the motion to adjourn, I just wanted to make a comment, I think that, Bonnie, you did a wonderful job of doing your presentation, it kind of reminded me of retirement party, ever heard somebody damn, "Thank you so much"? So I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Your motion is accepted, we'll call motion.
Yes.
Make sure to do it.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming, thank you. So now, why I want to make, first of all, that story, why did you need to work?
What story? I was calling, thank you. What story?
Oh, it was, it was the, the look wasn't a triple X. No, the, the, it wasn't that U in it. I guess I talked out, no, it was a...
No, come on, just keep it realistic, I mean, that's what was said.
I don't know, that's kind of scary there, huh?